Okay, so I'm gonna pursue that with Mark and find out what's the exact story here. Jordan, are you comfortable with that?
That's good to me.
Okay, so we're gonna table this till the next meeting. Okay, I reviewed the license for the Speedway. Omar and Jordan, have you reviewed it?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we sign it and okay it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Okay, this is the chief?
Yes.
Okay, the only problem is, is the Speedways are not part of the essential list as of yet. So they cannot operate as a family right now.
Essential business. Essential business, okay. When were they gonna start opening?
May 2nd of '14.
May 2nd, okay. People should be opening by May 2nd.
This is, this is just the license, chief.
Just the license, the whole thing?
Yeah, it's just the license that we issue him every year. His schedule is attached here, but I talked to him and he said he is not gonna be able to keep this schedule because of the COVID. We're not giving him permission to open by any means. We're just giving him a license.
I had a conversation with him as well today.
Oh.
And he's aware, and I believe his website says the same thing, that there is and will not be a schedule until further notice.
Right.
I'm not even sure that June is...
Right.
It's definitely possible, but it's not gonna happen.
Well...
I just wanna make sure that everyone is under the understanding that even if the license is signed by the board, he's still not gonna be able to operate until the restrictions are lifted by...
It's true.
Right.
Sure.
His schedule goes all the way through to October 10th. So this is just a $25 license that he can even do business. But yeah, he, he does understand he's not gonna be able to open. So, do you recommend they sign the license?
He can sign it, uh, they can sign it certainly. I believe that Chief Ames also has to, has to weigh in on that because before the license is issued, I believe he has to do an inspection of the property.
I don't know, I've nev- I haven't found anything to that effect in the file. I'm just copying exactly what they did last year.
Well, Chief, what we can do, Chief, I think what we can do is we can put in a, uh, just a note with this license that this is subject to review, a safety review from the fire department. Chief Ames is gonna be here at 5:30 in about 10 minutes and we will, we'll ask him that when he gets here.
Okay.
Omar?
Okay.
Jordan?
That was good.
Okay, just wanted to check. Reviewed, intends to cut for Boucher and Deener, one on Hilltop Road. Jordan, are you comfortable with those?
Yep, I know one of them's fine. The other one, I know where it is. I helped fill it out before at the locker.
Okay, Omar?
I believe I've already signed those two, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I know, I just verbally, just wanna make sure we're all voting for it, okay. Okay.
If I wasn't for it, I wouldn't have signed it.
I know, but we're at the meeting and I've gotta take votes on everything. I just wanna do it properly. Veterans Tax Credit is next. I reviewed it and signed off on it. Omar and Jordan, are you comfortable with those?
Yes, I signed it.
Okay.
Well, this is what I didn't sign until I've been focused discussing, so I'll be in tomorrow to sign it as I told the administrative assistant.
Thank you.
Okay. Review the safety data sheet for the magnesium chloride at the, for the Highway Department. I've reviewed this, I know Omar, you have some questions on arsenic, on reviewing all the pages. I didn't see anything in here with arsenic in it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you go to the other spec sheet that they have, it does talk about arsenic, but it's mental chemist, that evidently all along the western edge of New Hampshire on the Connecticut River, there's all kinds of arsenic mined. We used, evidently the state, people in the state of New Hampshire used to mine arsenic. So arsenic is actually, naturally occurring already in our soils. But the thing that got me from reading the spec sheet, Mr. Chairman, was there was all lists of the, uh, concern, environmental concerns, talking about not just the dust, people inhaling the dust, but if somebody was inhaling any of the magnesium chloride immediately after it were applied to the ground and, and dogs, pets, and wild animals getting into that. But as long as, as far, at this point in time, Mr. Chairman, as long as the residents on those roadways know that that stuff's gonna be applied to their roadway and, and they don't have a problem with it, then, you know, like in my understanding, if this stuff is used all over the country, except there's always an asterisk next to, you know, where it says making the decision to use it. The asterisk is you gotta, you know, the decision makers need to balance keeping the dust down and that medical challenge and putting chemicals down that can also create some potential medical problems. So my only, I guess my concern would be as long as the people on those gravel roadways, dirt roadways, know that that stuff's gonna be applied, then I, and, and they don't have any problem with it, then I'm not gonna have a problem with it.
Okay, I'm gonna make a proposal that we notify the town residents that if they, if they don't want this material applied to the roads near their house, that they need to notify the town administrator in writing ahead of time. And the town administrator will let the road agents know that.
It would be good if they email or put it in writing before, like say, May 4th.
Okay, and then it has to be done in writing before May 4th?
Because that's where I'd have to start.
How do I get the notice out to the...
On the website?
I would hang something in the post office, hang something at Shawnee's. I will put it on the Facebook.
Okay, and then we'll, we will notify the town through the post office, Shawnee's, and, and the town office. And so if a town resident doesn't wanna have this applied in front of their road, they just need to let us know in writing. And I think that will be safe for, for everybody.
I, I do know there's a few residents that have told me they don't want it near their house, and I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Okay, let's take a vote. Jordan, go ahead.
I was just gonna recommend that we vote to let Paul purchase it according to the contract we've entered into.
Right, I vote, I second that. And let's take a vote, Jordan?
I vote yes.
I vote yes. Omar?
I vote no.
Okay.
Two to one.
Yeah.
Passes two to one.
Okay, I'm gonna pass this up to you. Okay. Jordan, we're gonna talk about the HEB Engineering update on the Frescon Bridge and the Cross Road Bridge. Could you give us an update on that, where we stand and how we're moving along?
Yeah, as far as I know, we're, we just need to go through the scope of services with the new pricing or fees that HEB is going to charge us. They had already penned us that original scope of services, you know, the kind that Homer had notes on. So they said that they included those updates in the new scope of services with the actual billings, and I think they're now waiting on us. DOT letter to approve HEB has already been done, so we can move forward on that. So it's as simple as signing off on HEB and their services and pricing.
Yes, I, Jordan, I reviewed the HEB letter today and it just needed an okay for us to, to launch to Chris Fortier from HEB. The process, I talked with Paul Hatch today from FEMA and Homeland Defense. And he's, the process, he needs to have an okay with HEB first, we have a contract signed. Our deadline for this project is January of 2021. Once FEMA has the contract, once we've signed the contract with HEB, they can then validate that contract, make sure that the monies are appropriate. Then they'll review it with the state, with C.R. Wilkie, and they'll oversee it also. And then the money can be, then the money can be advanced to the town so that we can proceed with, with construction of these bridges. Is that how you understand it, Jordan?
That's how I understand it.
Okay, so I, Omar, are you comfortable proceeding with HEB doing the, the engineering?
I, I am, but the way you just explained things, Mr. Chairman, sounds like there's two or three other entities that have to agree to that.
But they've already agreed. They've already agreed. All, the only, the only tripping point is the town committing to HEB. Once we commit to HEB, everything else falls in line.
There's a motion out there, I'll second that motion to go with HEB, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's take a vote, Jordan?
I vote yes on that.
What is the motion, please?
To accept the scope of services.
To accept the scope, okay, hang on, I'm just describing the motion. The motion is to accept HEB's scope of services and proceed with contract negotiations. Then to notify Paul Hatch at FEMA and C.R. Wilkie at New Hampshire DOT, that this is the group that we're gonna go with. Feed both FEMA and the New Hampshire DOT will then review their, HEB's contract to make sure it's within reason. Verbally, they've said they're coming in underlined. And that's what we're voting on.
Great.
That's what I seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so it looks like it's three to zero.
I, I vote yes.
Yes?
I vote yes.
Okay. Okay, that's done. Now, that's a, that's a big plus because we're hitting a deadline from the town and as long as we can push forward on these bridges, we can get the extension. And that's, that's good. We need to designate, the next topic is, we need to designate representatives for the Pemmy Baker Solid Waste District. Randy Brueker has been nominated and accepted. He's gonna talk with Jim...
Fulton.
Fulton to help him with that project. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Omar?
Yeah.
Okay, that's three to zero, okay.
So you mean...
It's Fulton.
Okay, okay.
Okay, who seconded it?
I did, Jordan did.
Jordan.
Okay.
Chief?
I vote yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, everybody, take a deep breath. We're moving along really well. Linda, do you have any questions?
No, just, like, we need to be a little more full, we're making our...
Okay. Okay, now we're gonna move on. We have a guest from the Planning Board who's gonna go over the mission statement of the Planning Board, what their plans are for the future of the town of Wentworth. The Planning Board has not redone the town plan for 35 years, it's long overdue. I'm personally excited that this gets done and I'd like to introduce John Mead for the presentation. John?
Good evening, how are you all?
Good, John.
I have something to read into the record, it's something that was pre-prepared and then I'm not able to answer any questions. My name is John Mead, I'm Secretary of Planning and Reporting and I'm a member of the 2021. The important is about the large fusion of what we do. Some people know, some people have no ideas. So I try to explain everything all at once, basically what we're trying to do. Wentworth Planning Board is an elected five-person board. If the board does not have a free board elected, it can appoint members for a period of one year until the next town election. All elected members serve three-year terms. Wentworth Planning Board has alternates to set in the event, a four-person board cannot be met. Presently, we have a full board and two alternates. We also have an ex officio select person that votes with the board. The board this year is as follows. Madam Chairperson is Marina Ratakele, recently elected and should be replaced in 2023. Vice Chairperson, George Morrell. Secretaries myself, John Mead. We have a member, Armae Cole. We have a member, Hannah Peck. We have alternate members, Sonia Scheller. Alternate member, Craig Pascoe. And our ex officio as of right now, select person, Arnie Scheller. There's an adopted set of Wentworth Planning Board regulations that has been recently updated that governs the boards and its decisions. The board is also tasked with keeping the master plan up to date. Present master plan is outdated and has not been updated since the mid-1980s. The master plan is so outdated that for all intents and purposes, cannot be used. What's the planning board do? Wentworth does not have any zoning, and at any meeting, you'll always hear our Madam Chair reiterate that. Wentworth does not have any zoning, so there's always confusion that where the zoning board written on. It does have historical heritage, uh, I'm sorry. Wentworth also does not have historical or heritage districts. Has no differentiation between commercial residential properties. With all that said, within Wentworth is limited to select board review of engineered septic systems as well as driveway permits. Police chief assigns any 911 addresses unless a property is subdivided. Anything that could be built on a present lot as well as any lot size, only septic and FEMA regulations can prevent the building on any present lot in town. We constantly get questions from people from out of town buying pieces of property and asking to come before our board. Unless they're subdividing the lot, our board has no jurisdiction. So that's what we point them back at the select board and then, of course, if they try to do a new piece of property, they build a piece of, a new building, they may go before the select board with a septic plan. Where Wentworth Planning Board is given to play subdivision of land and any lot line adjustment. There are minor subdivisions, three blocks or less, or a lot line adjustment. A major subdivision is four lots or more. So when you have a person trying to subdivide, subdivide a lot of land, it's either going to fall to a minor or a major. Also, what is a lot line adjustment? They're gonna budge each other and they want to change their respective lot size for any reason. One grows and the other reduces. A surveyor's plan is brought forth to Wentworth Planning Board for preliminary review and comment. Once board comments are given to the surveyor, he pays an application fee and all the busters are notified by registered mail to attend the next scheduled Wentworth Planning Board meeting. These meetings were formed or held the first Monday of every month at 6:30 PM in the town office select persons meeting room. Obviously, the last meetings have been electronic or remote, we need credentials. The right one is secretary, it'll be an email on request. A lot line is above for the voids to be used for performing to Wentworth Planning Board regulations and are approved by the majority vote. If disapproved or delayed, the board will continue to review the documents to approve or re-bank. The legal change is then filed via plan with graphic and registered deeds. What's subdivision? A subdivision is just, since it sounds large, parts remain subdivided for commercial and residential use. The board will use, will give use of the Wentworth Planning Board regulations determines if the subdivision can provide adequate access via driveway into a new road. If this is accessible at full no-alter, this is service vehicle reasonable entry. The Wentworth Planning Board ensures septic apps, active space for septic systems and wells are met. Under five acre per lot subdivisions require approval from the, the, sorry, excuse me, the National Department of Environmental Services before the Wentworth Planning Board can approve the application. If board is concerned with water table wetlands that we have in Wentworth, ensure that all FEMA regulations are met. The board is very open-minded and in times will sway away from the rights of the land, will not sway away from the rights of the landfill. That said, upon approval, the subdivision is filed with graphic and registered deeds. This board is tasked itself with updating the master plan. The master plan is intended to be freshly updated every five years, promises it's 35 years old. The master plan is in its head to survey the townspeople and people in the areas. Within this town, the lot line is to be...
How am I...
There's been much worry with this document, you know, associated with zoning. By obviously, this is more than dive, we boards are in Wentworth, it's a direction how this selecting area can have no understanding of the direction that other townspeople want to go, the town to go. There are proposed heritage districts for the center of town and village. This can be asked for in a master plan survey, the president do not exist. There are big questions concerning Wentworth Planning Board approval of commercial properties to see if they conform to the fabric of the master plan and how the town wants to be. That would also be a question from to the townspeople on how we want to tackle a sensitive thing that we actually confuse as zoning. We're looking for any other questions to be added to the master plan survey. Maybe we'll see folks at the Dunk Town Office, Post Office, and Shawnee's, as well as Wentworth Elementary, Elementary School, asking for you to fill out the master plan survey. It's our intent to probably most of it electronic. It will take us up to a year probably to get a good master plan in place. We could hand this over to a master plan such as a national country council, but it could cost the town upwards of $30,000. We're trying to be mostly just working house and trying to keep the cost at below $5,000. Finally, to reiterate, the sole authority of the Wentworth Planning Board is the Wentworth Planning Board regulations. We have no other authority. And once again, there is no zoning in Wentworth.
Okay, John, thank you very much for...
Very good.
Thank you very much for that presentation. So the...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that those remarks be appended to our minutes of tonight's meeting. I thought that was an excellent presentation, Mr. Mead, thank you very much. But I make a motion to have his remarks in full appended to the meeting, uh, minutes of this meeting.
I second it. You wanna vote, Jordan?
Yes.
Yes. Omar?
I vote yes.
Okay, three, okay. John, thank you very much for that presentation. I think your work is, is gonna really help the town of Wentworth move forward. As a note to the citizens of the town, the more that the citizens of the town can give input to the planning committee. And we will have the planning committee's contact information on the website so that you can digitally put your questions to the planning board and that they can use these to help guide them in developing this survey of how we wanna move the town forward. Are there any questions, anybody from the audience?
I heard one had something.
Jo- this...
This is George Morrell.
Yes, thank you, thank you for introducing yourself. George?
There are regulations in the flood plain according to FEMA and the select board is responsible for seeing those are upheld.
Okay, what, George, which one specifically are you talking about?
Uh, type flood plain. Any, any building in a flood plain comes under the regulations of FEMA regulations.
Right. Yes, I agree with that, okay.
That is basically the only zoning we have in town, I believe.
Okay.
They are listed within the Planning Board regulations, the FEMA regulations. So the updated Planning Board regulations, which we are about to actually produce to each of the board members, they were just accepted in February. Will also be available from a copy to the town, as well as a paper copy in the District and District Assistant's office. Within that is the FEMA regulations and, correct me if I'm wrong, George, 2007?
I don't have our contract, I don't see it.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that FEMA regulations are from 2007, I'm sure. So, yes, that is the only set of regulations which we can actually get off the phone. And they are within our Planning Board regulations. The select board, if anyone building a home on an existing lot that's not being subdivided, has to conform to those regulations. But I think, George, to also point out, anyone that's building a home on a lot has to get a subsurface disposal permit. And if they're in the flood zone, they also have to get an answer DES qualification.
Okay, John, question to you. Are you comfortable with the con, uh, what's the best contact information for people in town of Wentworth to get, communicate with the planning board?
I've given my personal email address, so that is usually the easiest way. And also added my cellphone that I use for work.
Okay, good.
It is an out-of-state cellphone number, but you can call me at any time. Plus, I have my personal, my home phone, and something with a message on it.
Okay, thank you, John. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. We're gonna talk about the Conservation Commission next. Conservation Commission is in charge of the town parks, the town forests. And they're in charge of acquiring land for the town to be used for town purposes and managing it. Right now, we don't have a full committee on the Conservation Commission, but I think this is a committee that needs to be filled with people who have interest in managing the town parks, helping to manage donations of land to the town and running that whole process. I think the Conservation Commission, who's also in charge of excavation and wetlands and interfaces with the DES, can work in synergy with the Planning Board to, to better move the town forward. And right now, I'm gonna make an appeal to anybody in town who has an interest in working on the Conservation Commission, to apply to the select board. And we'll try and get a committee, a cadre of people together to get this committee going to manage the town forest so that we can make walking paths, bike paths, and things like that through the forest where skidder trails have been used to recently forest the land. Are there any comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, point of, point of information, please?
Yes?
Does, based upon what you just described, would this Conservation Commission, would they have any say over, let's say, pruning of town-owned trees? Like, maybe the trees down at the tennis courts or things like that?
The Conservation Commission's in charge of all of the town forests. I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
I'm assuming that the, the conifer is down at the tennis courts constitute a town forest, but, you know, that, that is a pretty important standard treatise from my understanding.
Yeah, I, I don't know if the, I think Parks and Recreation are in charge of the, uh, to best of my knowledge, that's Parks and Recreation, there's a whole committee for that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, is there anybody, is, is people in agreement with that? That's Parks and Rec? That's Parks and Rec?
Yeah, as far as I know, uh-
Yeah, everybody here is saying Parks and Rec are in charge of the, uh-
Who's in Parks and Rec?
Um, the guy that takes care of everything, I can't think of his name, the older-
Eugene?
Eugene, that's Eugene.
Yeah, Eugene, I mean, I don't, I don't know how long he'd be doing it, but he's in charge-
So he might need some assistance with that if it's something that needs-
Omar, I think that's Eugene.
Garrett.
Garrett. And, uh, but he's eighty-five and he needs help, support.
Is he the only one on-
Yeah, I think-
Mr. Chairman, if I may further, is, is he the only one on the Parks and Recreation Committee?
There's the Friends of the Park.
There's, there's a committee called Friends of the Park, uh, which is a committee, but they're not, I don't think they function in actually doing things.
Manual labor.
Manual labor is, is Eugene. Eugene Garrett.
Right, but it, it, we, okay, I, I, I'll bring it up at the next meeting, thank you.
Okay, okay. Okay, uh, next, Randy?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I, I'm sorry. The next, uh, cause people aren't watching me. Uh, the transfer station presentation will be Randy Brewer.
Pretty, um, the transfer stations, Friday, I took a load of aluminum cans through Cal Patrick's and I brought the money here tonight. And we didn't do a cube app, the prices are low right now, so, you know, we'll wait and then try to get it all back. Um, also, we were very busy Saturday and Sunday. Uh, Saturday, I helped Jim for a little bit because we were busy. And they're bringing in a lot of brush also. And Sunday, I had a problem. Um, my other guy that fills in was a no call, no show. And I'd like to call it, um-
Yeah, I gotta do that. Okay, on that issue, I would like to, I move to go, that we move into a non-public session to discuss that.
Does he have more to his report, Mr. Chairman, before we go in?
Yeah, we're gonna go in, no, he's, uh, is there more to your report before we go into the non-public?
Just, no. There's, there, there's only one problem, man. There's other folks on the phone. Uh, so I'm not sure how, unless I kick them off the phone, everyone's gonna hear everything that's still on the phone, I shouldn't.
Uh, Omar and Jordan? I'm gonna make a motion that we go into a non-public at the end of the meeting because if I do it now, I'm gonna kick out everybody in town digitally. Are you comfortable with that?
Do it at the end of the meeting, Mr. Chairman, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, because right now, we're gonna bound seven, eight in town out of here, okay.
I will be, no, I think that's, I think that's good, thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's a good option.
I have no problem, um, I can kick people off, um, at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
Randy, can you invite everybody back?
I, I can do that. They're gonna do that on the public after. Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay. Randy, you gotta hold, do you want the whole thing on?
Oh, good.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, um, next presentation would be Chief Trot, the police chief.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I can.
Okay. I'll just do a brief presentation on calls for service that we had. Uh, obviously, this summary doesn't reflect all of the police department's activity during the last couple of weeks. But I'll touch on some areas where we've had some activity. Um, we done a number of department assists to include one for the police department. We got a subpoena in a court case with Wentworth resident that needs to be served. We handled that service for them. We took care of a vehicle that was off the road on top of Amwell Hill Road, uh, needed some assistance and we helped that driver get the vehicle back on the road. We also took care of a vehicle that was off the road at the top of North Dorchester Road. Uh, I contacted the owner, we were able to have the vehicle removed within a couple of hours. It was a non-reportable motor vehicle accident, so there wasn't a report that was required. We also took care of a non-reportable motor vehicle accident on Amwell Hill Road, um, for a Wentworth resident. We took a report of the theft of maple sugaring equipment that, uh, took place on East Side Road this weekend. That matter is still under investigation. We handled a civil standby between two Wentworth residents that turned into actually several multiple calls for service in a two day time period. But we were able to take care of the standby, get some property returned to include the vehicle and have the property separated without any further ado to that. We assisted the Plymouth Family Court with a service of some court paperwork on a Wentworth resident that pertained to a family matter. That service was completed and then returned to the court. And we also assisted the New Hampshire Electric Co-op with a report of theft of services from a resident on the East Side Road. And we're working with the New Hampshire Electric Co-op on that investigation. It's a world in terms of whether any charges are gonna be forthcoming at some point in time in the near future. So, that's, that's why we've worked to the board.
Okay, thank you very much, um-
Did I, I have a question of the chief, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Omar, go ahead.
This may be a jurisdictional question, but, uh, and it's, it's not a big deal, but it, it, it's kind of a, it, it, it's a question pertaining to, uh, something, uh, coming from a neighboring town and affecting potentially, uh, the town of Wentworth. Uh, one of the checks, uh, that I signed up on today, uh, involved a, uh, an animal from a neighboring town coming into Wentworth and evidently creating some, uh, consternation. And I don't know whether there was a ultimate decision that Wentworth didn't have a jurisdiction over that particular domestic animal and, and is that something that the, uh, neighboring town should be made aware of? Maybe you did, I, I'm just, because there seemed to be more to that story or that situation than what the little report that was attached to it. I know we're not talking much money, but I, I think it's, I think it's, it's, it's a question that may go to a, potentially a larger issue, maybe somewhere down the road, chief.
So, I guess just for the purpose of clarification, are we referring to a report submitted by the animal control officer where your services were obtained as a result of an animal that came to Wentworth from Warren?
Uh, oh, I thought it was from, uh, Runney, but okay, it could be Warren, I thought it was Runney. All right. That's, I, I believe that's the situation, chief, yes.
Okay, all right, well, I can, I tell you, I can tell you that we're only into April right now and I have issued citations to the owner of those animals. And to date, they have actually paid the town of Wentworth eight hundred dollars in fines that I have issued now. That's one of them mixed up for what we paid our animal control officer to handle those calls for service. And there were two other calls that I actually handled. And there was citations issued for those as well. So, yes, those are being addressed and addressed accordingly based on our ordinances that the town has pertaining to, uh, animals running large.
Very good, you answered my question, chief, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Hey, chief, I got a quick question for you. Do you consider running from the police, is that not social distancing?
What's that now?
No. I'm, chief, I'm sorry, I couldn't help it. Did you, did you hear what I said?
I did not, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, is, the, the question to you is running from the police, is that not social distancing?
Well, I'm okay with it as long as they're running out of one for it.
No, 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 chief, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just joking with you, okay. Um-
Listen, George, I have a comment for the chief.
Yes.
Just an update, um, I received an email from someone I thought that I, some of their new, and somehow they got this other person's name and my name, and they were looking for, um, yeah, gift cards. So just need to remind people, if they get an email of someone looking for gift cards, make sure they know who it's coming from. It's really somebody they didn't know. It has, it has, it's, was the street maker wrote it was the president's name, they had his name and my name in my email.
Okay.
And didn't, uh, get caught up in it, but I should have noted it earlier, especially when it said, uh, gift cards.
Thank you, George.
That's, that's a good, that's a good point that you bring up, George, and I thank you for that. I just want to bring to everyone's attention that one of the things that we're dealing with on a state level, uh, and there's been a number of reports that have come in, is the, uh, fraudulent, oh, fund raises that are out there pertaining to people who are trying to capitalize on our COVID nineteen situation. So I would encourage our residents to be very cautious about anyone attempting to solicit monies for first responders or schools or hospitals, uh, if they're not exactly sure who the organization or people are that's soliciting. There's a lot of illegal activity out there going on right now.
Thanks for the, bringing that up. Um, okay, next up is the fire chief.
Good evening.
Steve Fains?
So, for the last couple of weeks, we've had several calls. Uh, we've had some, uh, grass fire calls. We had one on Sunday afternoon, uh, that was in the town of Glunkliff. We were automatic for Warren on that call. Um, then we had, prior to that, we had a structural fire at King Forest Industries. Uh, that went very well. It was out quickly. Our response times were within seven minutes from the time the town, from the time we had pieces on scene. Uh, Wentworth pulled in approximately twelve firefighters on that one. Uh, we had Warren come in as an automatic, they had several firefighters. They were my water supply at that time. And I had Runney come in to back us up with air packs, et cetera. So, uh, we did some interior work, we laid some foam into the building. Uh, their sprinkler system worked excellent. It solved most of the fire and, uh, then they had some employees who got in hoses, et cetera. We're also being slammed, quite honestly, for fire permits right now. Everybody is wanting fire permits. Those are obtainable through your warden, which is myself, and the two deputy wardens, which is Baldavis Junior and Steve Welch. Their phone numbers are on the town website, mine and this. So you can call us and we can do a handwritten. If somebody is nervous about obtaining that physically, I can do it through an email. I'll make a photocopy of it, they sign that photocopy through an email, and then they'll, they'll be all set.
Okay, so it's, you're making it easy for the town residents, they can obtain this digitally or in person?
Correct.
And you've got people in both, um, North Wentworth, South Wentworth, and Central Wentworth.
Yes.
So it's, it's easy for people to get it.
Yeah, but we, we've cut out our bases with it.
Okay, and then also, you guys did a great job with the Easter parade?
Easter parade, which is happening at the same time that we had the structural fire, so, um-
You deserve a lot of ad voice to have a warning like that, putting out a fire and then running the parade.
Running the parade, yeah.
That's good, that's good. Um, next up is, uh, Paul Mason, the road agent. Um, and we're gonna discuss August and Zoe Road, uh, project first. Paul?
Uh, yeah, August and, uh, Zo Road, um, along with Buffalo Road. I'm gonna be ditching those roads, hopefully soon. Um, they're actually probably ready to do now, actually grading starting, but there's a lot of material gonna come out of August and Zo Road. The ditches are, if you drive up the road, the ditches are eight, ten feet off the sides of the road. And in order for us to get the water to shed to where it needs to be off the sides of the road, there's gonna be an awful lot of material coming out of there, I mean, hundreds of yards of material.
What type of material is this?
It's probably gonna be gravelly, loamy, grass, grassy-
Debris.
It's debris, basically, um, anything silted down in the ditches. And I am gonna go talk to the town, the residents that live on those roads because some people do have their lawns. I know they're out in the middle of, you know, the town right away.
Correct.
So I wanna talk to the town residents because in order to do that road the right way, you're really gonna get the ditches where they belong, which are, you know, ten to twelve feet off the road in most places there. Most people do have culverts across the driveway. Um, so I'm asking, typically, last year, I was dumping material wherever we could find a spot close by and, um, last year, the select board was in discussion about doing something different with material. And I'm asking if there had been any decision made or anything talked about before I start ditching, uh, because I really think I'm gonna start in the next couple of weeks doing some ditching over there.
Oh, so you need a decision before the next period?
Well, I mean, I, I would, I, it all depends on the weather, is what I'm getting to.
Well, let me ask a question, since I'm really trying to instill cost benefit ratios in this.
Yep, yep.
Um, what's the value of the material that you're pulling out?
Oh, I mean-
Per yard?
To try to sell?
Unclean fill.
You mean, it's clean fill, like, I don't like, I, most people would give it away, I mean, maybe a dollar a yard, maybe, if you're lucky, I don't know.
Okay, so-
But you gotta deliver it in the fuel cost. I'm, to me, I'm just, I'm just saying to me-
Yeah.
I, I need some advice to what you guys wanna do.
Okay, well, we'll do a cost benefit analysis, but let's, let's go over the scope of the project first, okay? So, you need to do ditching and, and that project makes sense. Um, Jordan, uh, do you have questions on this, uh, August Road or Zo Road?
No, no, I think as long as you can find a good place to get rid of that bill, that's what they usually do.
Right.
That's the way I have it, now usually just have to find a place to get rid of it.
Yeah, cause it, uh, we've only got two operators and, and the road crew. And if we have to, if finally we gotta move that material away, um, it, the longer the job's gonna take.
Yeah, I mean-
Go ahead.
It would be great if somebody that lived on August or Zo Road, August or Zo Road, needed fill or they had a place to dump it. That would be wonderful, I mean, but if not-
You wanna dump, you wanna dump a couple truckloads on my property?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get away without hauling across town.
Okay, I got it. What, what about, do you have a spot that you can temporarily take the material, right there on Zo Road? Or tell, tell people when you're removing it so that they can come and take the material away?
That's typically what I do is I just, I'll put it on Facebook and ask people, if anybody needs fill, this is where we'll be working. And you typically, everywhere I ditched last year, I had somebody within, within a half a mile that was sending a lot of fill.
Cause your, the thing is, is you, your mission is to fix the roads.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you don't wanna have mission creep where you're spending time moving material.
Right.
Um, Omar, you comfortable with a plan to open the material up to go to the town? Uh, residents that are on the road first, and George, questions to Jordan too. Uh, and then secondly, if any other residents of the town need fill, that they show up with their own trucks and, and move the fill and, and work in support of the road agent?
Well, I, I was the one that brought up the, uh, issue, uh, in, in two thousand and nineteen and got my hands slapped for bringing it up. Uh, but, uh, to me, what I'm concerned about is the town provide, and I, and that's why I thought you were talking about the cost benefit analysis, as chairman.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, I, I'm trying to adjust, uh, address the scope of the job first and then the approval of the fill as almost a second agenda of how to deal with it.
But it, it, look, you know, my experience over the years, Mr. Chairman, is even that type of a material has a value. You know, it has a value, it's, it's fill, and, uh, if the town is delivering fill to anybody's property, I mean, that's, that's, in my mind, that's a value being taken away from the town. And, uh, you know, we got, we got, uh, you know, we got an employee and we got a truck. And if you looked at, you know, the trucks are using, you know, oil and, and fuel filters and oil filters and, and wear and tear on the trucks, you know, we signed several, uh, checks today, you know, for, for several thousands of dollars for, for, uh, maintenance of our, of our equipment. And again, uh, I'm just concerned about town- And again, uh, I'm just concerned about town employees doing things for private citizens.
Omar, Omar, nobody?
You know, it may be a side of the road, but that's why I'm interested in that cost-benefit analysis, and I think that fill has a value.
Okay, Omar, nobody's talking about having the, the town, um, workers move the fill to private land. When, um, just in general, when you, when the power company comes along and cuts trees along the road, the landowner has first dibs on all of that wood. Um, and if they're ditching the roads right adjacent to your property, that, that's your fill. You own that land. Uh, the, the town has a right of way through there, but the, the wood and the, the material belong to the landowner. Um, the proposal that I'm making.
And I have no problem with that, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem with that.
Okay, and that, and that's what Mr. Mason just said. He just, he was gonna offer the fill to the landowners first. If there, and it sounds like we're gonna have extra fill. So if there's extra fill, m- my proposal is to publicize it, offer it up to other people in the town, so the town residents can benefit from it. And they, but their, their obligation is to haul the material. Uh, Jeff has a question. Jeff Ames has got a question.
So my question is, if you were to call, uh, a company and need fill brought into your project, and it was unclean fill, what would you expect to pay for that?
Well, they're gonna get you for hourly trucking fee, basically. Like I said, maybe a buck or two a yard if you're lucky, and then they'll, uh, add the trucking fee on. That's why it's not beneficial to have clean fill.
Trucking fees are gonna be fifty-five dollars an hour.
Oh, for a triaxle, you look at eighty.
I, 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 I'm just saying, most of the trucks are right here.
I, I mean, I'm talking about trucking this material less than a half a mile. I think if Jeff had a place real close by, or, you know what I'm saying, he's even close to Zo Road, that's all.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jordan, go ahead.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I di- I disagree with the fact that fill has any value at all. If you had, if we had to start putting out fill to bid or something like that, you'll never get another road ditched ever again.
I'm not putting, uh.
No, I just mean, it's, it's mixed gravel with low sticks. It doesn't have any value.
It's un, unclean fill.
Right, so what it is, though, is when Paul's up there working, he can't pile that off to the side either. He would come get, and this has to get loaded into a truck to take it.
Right away.
He has to get rid of that quickly without having to come to us, you know. Usually, they just load it in the truck. They find someone who has a bank that's willing to take it and dump it over. And the town truck will take it and dump it over some bank somewhere. It doesn't, no one's gonna pay for that fill.
Right.
And it's in the way of the day that he takes that.
I agree with you, Jordan. I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to do is make a proposal to, while he's doing the digging, instead of him loading the town truck, he can load it in whoever wants it, and they take it away.
I probably still would be wary about that, because he's gonna be loading that in people's pickups and everything. When you're talking about liability.
No, I'm talking dump trucks.
But, but I, I would just put it right into the dump truck and find someone who's willing to take it. And when the town dump truck can back up, dump it, and go away, it'll go back to work.
Okay.
Since it's third, all the other people to come pick it up, Paul's gonna stand there waiting around for people, and he'll never get the road ditched again. You just need to find, Paul needs to find someone who will take it and just get rid of it.
Could offer some suggestions as well.
Okay, well, Jordan, thank you. Say?
Can I pose a question?
Sure.
From Paul. How many yards are we talking about?
Who's, John Vee?
John Vee.
This is John Vee. John, I gotta introduce you, John.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Um, if, if I had to guess, uh, between Buffalo, August, and Zo Road, I'm gonna tell you I'm probably gonna take out three or four hundred yards of material.
So significant.
Yeah.
It's significant, like, somebody, yeah, if somebody's gonna have a place to dump it, like, they, yeah.
So our, our goal is to get the roads taken care of in two to three weeks, and, and take the excess fill and get that efficiently out of there. 'Cause that, otherwise, we've got mission creep, and a, and a two to three week road job is gonna turn into a five to six week, and then we won't be able to direct the road agent and his workers to other roads.
Yep, it's gonna happen on every road this year.
John, is that? Go ahead. Go ahead.
This is Jeff Davis, Chief Truck.
Truck.
Uh, I'm just gonna, I, I know it's not my department, but I'm gonna just, just give my opinion if I may. I weighed in on this a couple of years ago, uh, when it became questionable as to whether we should, should the town should or should not be doing this. I don't know if Wentworth is aware of it or if the current board is aware of it, but our sister communities, this is, this is a common practice in other communities. Uh, and I bring it up now because, uh, I have a daughter who is on a list, and I am on a list as well of the town of Went, uh, Hayrow, where we're contacted by the road agent, and they let us know that they're doing ditching in our area.
Good idea.
And they asked if we, if we're still interested in getting that ditching material, and if we would give them permission to dump it on our property and where it would go. We designed something. We designed something that's just, uh, that we do in writing that says we, we leave the town of any damage or anything that may be in the fill, and it's just ditching material that we use for the purpose of filling. And another thought process is, when it comes to residents, they, just like we do in Hayrow, pay taxes every year to take care of standing the road, growing the road. And when that ditching is done, you're giving back to residents something that they're able to utilize, that they're going to pay for much of their taxes. And it helps the road agent take care of the job more decisively than it would for him to try to find someplace else to get rid of that material. So just a thought process. Uh, it is something that is being done in other communities, uh, on a regular basis. So I, I don't think it's something that the town of Wentworth should make it more complicated than it needs to be.
I agree a hundred percent.
Chief, I think that's a great idea, and I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, uh, that idea. That we, um, make a list where if anybody wants fill, that's to notify in writing or, um, digitally through email to the town administrator, to be put on the list, and that the list is given to Mr. Mason, the road agent, and as the, the truck needs to move out, he just notifies the landowners. Anybody wanna second that?
Ernie?
Yes?
We have, uh, or, or actually, Homer, Homer, would you volunteer to do a one-page sign, something, release to the town of liability? Just a real simple.
Release of liability, uh, yeah, but with all the other paperwork I gotta explain that I'm not getting to later on in the meeting, I'm not sure the chairman's gonna be, uh, overly, uh, happy with me, but I'd be willing to do that, yes. And, uh, you know, with that, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to do that as long as you'll give me a little bit more strength to, uh, string myself up with, Mr. Chairman, but I would do that, and I would accept your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I've got a copy of the town.
Would that, would that means that we have a, uh, a limitation of liability, whole timeless, uh, agreement?
Yeah, something simple and easy.
Yes, and, um, Paul, you got a question?
I said, I've got a copy of a release, uh, from the town of Camden I got, that we can use. It's very simple. It's a lesson, a paragraph.
Okay, if you could drop that to Linda and she can pass it on to, uh, okay. Okay, well, Omar, to make your job easier on that release, we're, we're gonna get something from the town of Camden to you to see what they've done. And, um, so this has been seconded, uh, this proposal.
Yep.
Um, I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Jordan?
Yeah, I vote yes too. I just wanna make sure that Paul doesn't have to wait on this first go round for the, the fourth. It's not gonna take very long. He just needs to know the ditched road and do it again to.
Okay, I.
I, I don't think the current climate need took very long, uh, Jordan, than I did for the, uh, town, so. I mean, it's gonna be a lot shorter.
Guys, guys, okay. Okay, that's done. Um, and one other thing is employee applications. We've had three people apply for, uh, a position, um, with the road agent, and, uh, Paul, you wanna discuss it, your thoughts?
Um, two out of the three people that I've talked to, uh, that applied for the job have asked about a stipend if they don't take insurance, because, uh, both of them have insurance through their wife or girlfriend or whatever it may be. Um, however, that, that being said, uh, the town had an applicant that, in my opinion, I would, um, not hesitate, uh, to offer, the one applicant who is from the town of Wentworth, uh, I would not hesitate to offer him a job tomorrow. Um, he's got twenty-plus years of experience with the state and.
Does he have, does he have all his licensing? Can he use all the equipment?
He can run the grader. He can run the backhoe. He's got a CDLA license. Um, he's basically, he's fifty-seven years old, I think. He's worked for the town, I guess, back in the nineteen nineties, uh, for a little while.
Okay.
Um, right now, he works for the New Hampshire State Bridge, uh, I think it's the Bridge Crew.
Have you talked to his references?
Um, I talked to two references today, um, and both the references, both of his references were people just praising him, saying what a great guy he was, hard worker. Um, he is a town resident. He's the only town resident that we had applying. He's, in my opinion, the best applicant.
Okay, so you think he's the best applicant, you have two positive references. Randy, did you know him?
Yes, I do.
Uh, Randy, what's your thoughts?
He would be a great person for the job.
And you've worked with him for the state?
Yep.
Okay.
I plowed with him, yeah.
He's run plow trucks, wind trucks, the state trucks, I mean.
Okay.
He, and I wanted to say one other thing. I mean, it's, it's gonna matter what we offer him, I think, and what a stipend might or might not be. Um, but I do wanna say, the main thing that intrigued me about him is when I talked to him on the phone, he wanted to know, like, in the winter, our work hours are six to two. Um, and if we get called in at two o'clock in the morning, and we're done plowing at eleven o'clock in the morning, storm's over and it's done. I mean, in my opinion, I think the employees do have the right to work their normal work hours, which would be six to two.
Right.
And he is saying, I, I'll just go home. I don't care about the overtime at that point. And I think that is a huge benefit to the town, having somebody that says, I got my nine hours and I'm going home, even though it's eleven o'clock in the morning, when he could, I guess, potentially work until two o'clock, which would be his normal work time, and give another three hours. I think that is a huge benefit to the town.
So this is somebody you think that you can work?
I think he'd be a great, I think he'd be great to work with my, for, with me and John.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, I think he, I think he'd fit in, even though, I mean, I, I was kinda hoping we were gonna find somebody, you know, a younger person. I'm, I'm okay with him. He seems like he's in good shape and, uh.
Fifty-seven's young compared to me.
Well, it's a little older than me. I, I just think, uh, I, I think, you know, I won't make names, but, um, I think what the, I want the select board to do, so, 'cause he would have to give a two-week notice if we offered him the job, is to discuss what a stipend would be, and I'm sure that probably may have to be in a non-public, or maybe it doesn't, I don't know.
Well, you know, I, uh, the non, okay, stipends have been done in the past here. I've looked into that.
Yep.
And it's been done four times. Um, as long as it matches the policies and procedures of employees in the town, um, I don't have a problem with it, keeping the stipend a constant, uh, among all the town employees. Because it really saves the town a lot.
I, I agree.
By not having to pay all your health insurance. And so there's a value in that.
I agree.
Okay, I, I went, I talked with Morgan Carrier.
Yep.
And, and she, in, in the past, they recommended, uh, somebody that needed a stipend, that they gave them seven thousand dollars. A seven thousand dollar stipend. I would recommend that it be prorated over the, uh, year.
I.
But, but he's gotta prove himself first, you know, like any employee.
Yeah, you're not gonna get your stipend. It would be just like getting insurance. You don't get it until whatever, six months of service.
So it needs to be evenly distributed over the year, and I think that would be the approach to it. There's, it, it's not like you, you're breaking new, new water here. You're not breaking new trail.
Okay.
Um, it's been done in the past, and I would just follow what we did in the past.
Could I just add something? There is nothing in our personnel policy regarding it. So would the stipend be the same rules as, um, when you become eligible for insurance?
Yes.
Which is after ninety days?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, so after ninety days, then they would become eligible?
Right.
For a stipend? So, okay, and we pay stipends quarterly?
Yeah.
They're.
Yeah, just distribute it over the year rather than a lump sum, right?
All right.
Okay.
My next question is, and it doesn't have to be discussed now, but would be for the select board, Linda?
Okay, hang on, hang on. Jordan and Omar, are you comfortable with what we just proposed?
I guess I'm uncomfortable talking about this in a public, public session, but, uh, I'm also uncomfortable when you're talking about age. Uh, I, I think that's a real, real problem when you're talking about employees, is talking about age. Uh, boy, that's, in my mind, that's thin ice to be traveling on folks.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I think we should, uh, how many other applicants do we have? I have copies of two different applications. There was a few more, wasn't there?
Uh, I think there's only officially two, because one of the applicants, I guess he didn't put in his application, 'cause he was waiting for me to get back to him to see if the town offered a stipend, which I, we haven't had a meeting, so I had to get back to him.
Okay, I would be okay with a stipend, especially if it saves town money versus what we would pay for health insurance. I think that we should probably interview four or two different people and do the normal round, but other than that, I agree with everything you talked about.
Do you, Jordan, do you wanna take part in the interviews with, uh, Paul?
I wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Are they not gonna come in? Are we not gonna have, like, a non-public or something to interview one or two people?
You don't need a public meeting to interview.
You don't need a public meeting to interview.
Um, so.
It's, it's an employee interview process.
Okay, I've never done it before, so.
At, at this, at this point, I would say, Jordan, um, that there's really only one applicant that I would, um, think about interviewing at this point. Uh, the other one doesn't have a CDL license. Um, doesn't have much experience at all operating equipment, and the other applicant is also sixty-six years old.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Um.
You just guaranteed that sixty-six-year-old to interview?
Yeah. Yes, so we'll interview those two people. Okay, so Paul and Jordan, Omar, do you wanna interview them?
Uh, I would be very much interested in sitting in on the interview process, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for asking.
Okay.
Well, I think, uh, I think I need to sit out of one of the interviews, because he used to be my ex-wife's uncle. Or he is my ex-wife's uncle.
So you gotta recuse yourself.
I gotta recuse myself from that interviewing process.
Okay, Jordan and Omar, you're on for the, setting up the interviews.
Okay.
Okay?
After I prepare the, uh, limitation of liability, whole timeless agreement.
Okay. Or do you, okay, you know, to make that.
No, 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 no. Ernie, set it up.
Okay.
I'll work with Paul on it, and then, and then copy your guys on emails.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, employees, okay, Linda, um, we're gonna do an administrative assistant update on the Coho with the Primax plane.
Okay, um, Coho is supposed to provide some information.
Okay, um, co-host is supposed to provide some information to the attorneys at Primex. Um so they received the report from co-host, and it seemed quite simple. Um so I was in touch with the attorney at Primex and sent that on, so now it's, he's gonna review and see if, if he needs anything more than that, I'm hoping that this satisfies it, but like I said, it just seemed quite a simple thing that co-host did, uh could have been done in-house very easily. I think maybe they just think, uh, co-host is stationary at this point. So um I'm gonna wait to hear from that attorney, and hopefully we'll get this claim money in very soon. Any questions about that?
I, I don't, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Arnie has left for just a moment, so.
I can see his chair.
Well, he is the chair after all.
Chair of power. I can hear him in the background.
Oh, I can.
Who are we looking for?
He's, he's on his way back.
I have to get it right. Sorry, I just needed to change, we're sorry. Um.
Mr. Chairman, I, as you know, for a couple of weeks, I was dealing with a, a medical issue over and above my November twenty-fifth medical issue, and uh I just need some more time, I, I have, I have completed one of the non-public sessions, I was supposed to leave that off today, but uh I needed to leave the building quicker than I had anticipated today. I just need more time, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I'm involved in a lot of these uh COVID, COVID-19 legal uh presentations, and I still have a law practice, this is something over and above what a select person should be doing, but I'm gonna try to work on it later on this week and next week, Mr. Chairman, I just need some more time.
Uh new business, um, we had a washout of seventy-five feet on uh Nichols Hill Road. Uh we had to do an emergency um fix to that, for which we purchased gravel from Warren Sand and Gravel. The road is now passable uh this morning, I think, on the other side, and we walked the road with the road agent to get an idea of how to prevent this from reoccurring. This road is washed out in this particular area, uh in every one of the heavy rains, and it's costing the town a lot of money to do these emergency uh fixes. They work to modify his side of the road, so that we can crouch the road properly, ditch it properly. We'll have to take five or six trees down on his property, he's agreed to it, we're gonna mark those. It's a project that needs to be done, but I'm just notifying people in town that even though the area is rough and, and not, not a good road at this time, that it's gonna be fixed in the future. There's also a bridge on East Side Road that's starting to erode away, and it's been flagged with a yellow marker tape. Uh and we're, we're in contact with the state on that bridge, and uh the road agent is applying, uh looking into applying to FEMA to help out with these bridge repairs, 'cause we really, the, the roads and the bridges in this town are in bad shape and need a lot of work. Um there's also, um, John Mead has a large amount of loom that he's donating to, uh that he's offered to donate to the town, and I need to put this to a selectman's vote. Um uh I'm making a proposal that this donated room, loom, can be stored at the town, the Old Town Hall, and used for uh, uh, used for um landscaping around both the town hall, the bridge, uh the pathway through the historic district, and also the Veterans Memorial, um as we come into doing the final landscaping in those projects. Um but this would, this would require using the town truck to move maybe four or five loads of loom, which would be required for these landscaping missions. Um and I'd like to get a vote from the select board on, on letting the town trucks do four or five loads and storing it at the Old Town Hall. Anybody wanna second that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a vote? I vote aye.
Work votes yes.
Omar?
Omar votes yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the donation, John.
John? There you go. Okay.
You're welcome, Omar.
Um, any comments from the public, um either through YouTube or calling in on the, the town phone?
I just had one comment online regarding wanting uh the fill, um but you've already indicated how to.
Just put your name on the list.
Right, exactly, so, you said indicated to contact the town administrator or person, kind of administrator.
Yeah, and probably with digital, getting on through, through email is the best way, Wendy?
Um, yes, to get on the list, yeah, I've got a post up on the website now.
Super, okay, good.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I think that's it for, if there's no more public comments, um, I move to adjourn to Mead.
I can only do.
Oh, wait a minute, excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry, we need to go to a non-public.
Oh, that's right.
That's right, I almost forgot, I apologize, Randy. And I make a motion that we go to a non-public?
I second that motion.
Aye?
Yes.
Omar votes yes.
Okay, we're going to non-public.
All right, I'm gonna be kicking everyone else off, uh that shouldn't be uh.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, we, clear to go?
Nope.
Thanks for reminding me what to do.
Um Chief Trot Solon, do you, do you mind if he's in the?
No, Chief Trot shouldn't be here.
Okay, all right, I am going to.